Call this meeting in order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is a proclamation for child abuse prevention. If anybody is here to receive it, meet me at the podium.
Whereas, we all have a responsibility as individuals, neighbors, community members, and citizens of Silver City to help create healthy, safe, and nurturing experiences for children. And whereas, safe and healthy childhoods help produce confident and successful adults. And whereas, child abuse and neglect often occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources, and they do not know how to cope. And whereas, the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community. And whereas, child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure family has the support they need and deserve to raise their children in a healthy environment. And whereas, it is recognized that no one person can do everything, but that everyone can do something, and together we can create change for the better. And whereas, effective prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among agencies, schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas, displaying a blue ribbon in April will serve as a positive reminder that together we can prevent child abuse and keep children safe. Now therefore, I, Michael S. Maronis, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, do hereby proclaim April 2015 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Silver City. And I urge all citizens to engage in activities that strengthen families and communities to provide the optimal environment for children to learn, grow, and thrive, so that all children have the benefit of happy, healthy, and safe childhoods.
Thank you.
Would you like to say something?
On behalf of the Children, Youth, and Families Department of New Mexico and the children of the Town of Silver City, I thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public input. I'll remind you, you have five minutes. I will try to give you a little one-minute warning when that comes up. The first individual is Kurt Alberthardt, in regards to the Murray Hotel.
Good afternoon. My name is Kurt Alberthardt, from the Murray Hotel in downtown Silver City. Councilors, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to take this opportunity, as we head into what is going to be a very busy summer, to thank everyone at the Town of Silver City who has worked with us over the past few years during some challenges getting the building up and running, and making everything work for downtown. Also, thank you for your help and continued assistance in our challenging bridge rerouting project that we're all dealing with right now. We see a little bit of an upturn in downtown, and we'd like to hope that that continues and maybe even reflects in some gross receipts numbers for the town, so thank you all.
Thank you. Next on the list is Don Trammell. In regards to the Bridge community, did you want to wait till that item comes up on the agenda?
I think we're last on the agenda.
We'll wait for the agenda. Next item on the agenda is council comments. Counselor Beddson.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to mention that Councilman Smith and I met with the Town Manager, Alex Brown, on Monday, so it's gonna be sort of like, I'm gonna do a little bit, and then Councilman Smith's gonna fill in a little bit on some pertinent things. One of the things that we talked about, of course, was the bridge and rerouting through town, and what we'd like to see. And one of the concerns that came out during the discussion was if by chance a truck did come in using Cooper from Highway 90, and didn't quite realize what they were getting into, because sometimes there's inexperienced drivers in this area, that if that truck driver decided, "Oh, I can't make that turn at Broadway, I think I'll go down to the next street." We don't want them to go down to the next street, because we all know that the businesses and homes on market are very close to Broadway, and there's only a left-hand ability to turn there. So, we have suggested, and I think the town will be doing this, that there will be no more trucks north of Broadway on Cooper, because we just don't want to see a Jack Knight semi right there. The county has already put a sign out on 180 on market on that entrance saying, "No trucks," so we're just trying to kind of make sure that that sort of thing occurs. And we're trying to be very proactive. Alex was very receptive to many of the things we talked about, and as I say, Councilman Smith will continue on with this discussion. But I think that part of it is, is working closely, as they have been, the town has been working closely with the Highway Department. And I'm sure at the next council meeting, maybe, or at the first one in May, we'll have more information, because I think you plan to have a meeting with them, correct?
Yes, we have a meeting with them on the 26th, and I haven't been able to deal with Peter, who's a little bit busy, to go over our concern and concerns, but I found a meeting with him to discuss some of the issues that we can take care of right away. And, but we, like I said, those things we can take care of right away, won't be addressed. And like I told you, staff has been meaning on the project continuously, and we will be monitoring that, and if necessary, change, make changes daily if we need to. And we have the authority already, and the authority to make those changes, so we'll do what is necessary to ensure that it is a safe process.
Well, so, and thank you, Alex. So I think that really what it comes down to is realizing that there could be daily changes and just being wary, and realize that in the first part of the project, when everybody's getting used to everything, we know it's gonna be really difficult and everything, but we'll just be cognizant of the fact that there could be changes different from what you've experienced the day before, in trying to ensure traffic flow, and to reduce accidents and things like that. So, I really appreciate the work that the town staff has already done, and they continue to do on this, so thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And echoing with that highlight, I closure, it is going to create a number of drastic changes in traffic patterns in town. It will be pretty hard at first, and then hopefully they'll look a bunch of the pattern, it will flow more smoothly, but it will mean that there will be a lot more traffic going into our downtown area via Broadway. Now, one of the things that's wonderful about Silver City is that we have a lot of events. And in those events, we've done things like street dances, street races, street fairs, and of course, street beer gardens. And I like those, but the thing that we need to be mindful of, and I want to speak to all of the event coordinators out there, from now on, as this project on the Bridge geese corn, which I think will be about a year, is that we can't close the old Broadway, and we can't close Arrowwood. We're gonna have to be really, really mindful. So, that means that this is an opportunity for the Granite County Chamber of Commerce to come and talk with the town soon, about the 4th of July parade. People in the Clay Festival to talk with the town soon, if you were planning on closing down for a street dance. Back-to-school events, Alumni Weekend, weekend at the galleries. What we had last year was October Fest, it's got Lusar, the Tenor Fiesta, the Light of Christmas Parade. A lot of stuff that we're really used to celebrating in the uptown is gonna have to be rethought while this project is going on. And this is just a public call for us to rethink calmly and work together to have fun, and then at the same time let traffic flow.
Counselor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. One other thing on that subject like that is that we're all gonna have to be very, very careful of the privacy, ourselves and themselves and everybody else. Be patient, and it will be done. Thank you.
Counselor Kano.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I attended the Senior Olympics opening ceremonies on Saturday, along with Mayor Maronis and Counselor Ray, and I just wanted to publicly thank Mario Kimbana and his board for what they're doing there. They grow every year, and it's just an awesome event. I really, really enjoyed it, and I really enjoyed watching Counselor Ray show us all of his track moves. He ran several events, which is pretty amazing. Also, as you'll notice, all of us are wearing our silver bands to paint the town's hill for essential health awareness man, so you'll be seeing several people around town wearing those, so that's why we're wearing them. And the Disability Resource Center will be having their grand opening on April 20th, which is on Monday, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., at 1016 North Silver, which is right next door to the rec center. And for that, I would also just like to thank Suzu Tio with the Grant County Health Council, Evangel Zama with LifeQuest, and Patricia West Okiri, who is a professor in the Social Arts Department, Western Wisconsin University, because they've been spearheading this project, and the resource center is gonna be available to all residents, so please take advantage of it.
Thank you, councilors. Thank you, Counselor Kano, for actually sharing that there's still a lot of good activities happening, a lot of neat things going on, and we continue to move forward in spite of some of the hurdles that we have, such as the bridge construction. But that is the big beast in the room, and we do definitely need to make sure that we take care of that. That being said, does anybody else need round two? Counselor Beddson.
I want to thank Counselor Kano for mentioning the event that she attended. I know that I attended the CDT, Comal Divide Trails Trail Day, along with Councilman Smith was there for a short minute, and I did welcome him on behalf of the town. I was hoping that Mayor Maronis would be there, but he was otherwise engaged welcoming and doing things for the Senior Olympics, so I kinda did that off the cuff. But it was exciting to see so many folks there. It really was standing room only over at the Toad. It was great, because so many of the folks, when Senator Rowles asked how many were from out of town, I would say three-quarters of the room raised their hand. And we had lots of folks coming through the university museum that said that they were here specifically for the CDT Trail Days. So, I think that's a great event, and I look forward to having that annually, if we can, at least a recognition, because it really calls into prominence the fact that we are the first gateway community town to be recognized on the CDT Trail. It's great for us, and great for tourism, and wonderful for everyone that enjoys the outdoors and that wonderful trail, so thanks a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else need round two? Counselor Ray.
Hey, Mayor. I also attended the Villa Pole Creek Fest, and it was very, very interesting. They had a lot of people, people were having fun, and I have never been to one of those before, and it was amazing. I think people should go and check them out, even if it's not something that you like, but check it out. You'd be surprised how much fun it is to be there. And you can have a lot of fun watching everybody dance. And one more thing, I'm hurrying from Saturday.
Any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Next item is approval of minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Ray Smith.
I move to approve the Council of the Town of Silver City regular council meeting minutes from March 24th, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion statement.
We have a motion as second to approve the minutes of the Town of Silver City's regular meeting on March 24th, 2015. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I always like to show a little bit of what we're doing right now in advertising.
Next item is reports. We'll start with Silver City Arts and Cultural District, George.
As you know, the philosophy, there you go, that we bring forth right now in our advertising is going big with Silver City to make sure that we are noticed, and it is working. Turn it on. Good evening. Mayor, councilors, town staff, friends. My name is George June McWarren. I'm here tonight representing Silver City Arts and Cultural District, Tourism, and You can see the New Mexico Magazine, it's a full-page back cover. the Murray Ryan Visitor Center for a quarterly report. It's a beautiful ad promoting City of Rocks, and is in partnership with state co-op money, First thing that I would like to do is ask, Mayor, if I may approach the bench. New Mexico True. And then, of course, the center spread, and if you want to showcase that one, there we go, thank you. It's a hard one to see from back there, but it's a series of pictures of folks dancing at Picamania, very lively center spread in Silicon Valley, Tucson. Tonight, I would like to start with an attitude of gratitude, and first of all, my job is made easy by the many creative people at Silver City that contribute in so many ways to making this place what it is. It makes it easy to promote this place as a fabulous, fun destination location. But I also want to do two acknowledgements of two people who really make this job what it is, and make it easy on me, and that is Michelle Gills and, of course, Rebecca Martin. And the two of them, I couldn't do what I do without them. I want to acknowledge the contribution that the two of them make to this community is phenomenal, it's tireless. In particular, I want to acknowledge Rebecca, who handles visitor services at the Murray Ryan Visitor Center. She is tireless in what she does, the visitors love her, the volunteer staff love her, she's multi-talented, and I couldn't do the statistical analysis that I provide to you without Rebecca, who works wonderfully on the technical side as well. So, an acknowledgement, thank you, and thank you. I'm gonna bounce around a little bit, but I also want to acknowledge Teresa Martinez of the Continental Divide Trail Coalition. They did a fabulous job for a first-time event in Silver City with the Continental Divide Trail Trail Days, which I think next year we'll call it Continental Divide Trail Days, sorry, we're gonna have to repeat ourselves. But it was a fabulous kickoff event, as already acknowledged. We've already seen a tremendous amount of the through hikers coming to Silver City. Many of them came off the trail to come to the event, then turned around to go pick up where they were on the Continental Divide Trail. So it's really phenomenal. Many of them came just for this event, and it mimics what happens on the Appalachian Trail and on the Pacific Crest Trails every year. There are kickoff events like that, and they have the potential to grow significantly, as does ours. So, I love the community support that came out for that multi-day event, and as a matter of fact, it was within the charter, the application that we filed on behalf of the town, that we in fact hold an annual event like that, celebrating the Continental Divide Trail. So, we will see it again next year, and it'll be bigger and better. It's been a wonderful partnership with them. We have started to develop an advertising campaign specifically around the Continental Divide Trail that you'll see coming out of our office in the coming months. If you notice, there's five posters in downtown, fairly sizable, one in a tri shop and a bike shop. And they are stunning images of actual through hikers on the CDT, and we are gonna be developing more around that in the future. This has national and international potential, so I'm huge on the Continental Divide Trail, and what it brings as a focal point to the National Forest, really, and our area. Another partnership that I wanted to acknowledge, we went out to the Tucson Festival of Books, 130,000 people in two days. We partnered with the Southwest Festival of the Written Word, so we were aligning culture to culture there. We were talking absolutely non-stop for two days. At times, there were four of us going. Silver City showed up, and they showed up right back at us. So, it was fabulous. We collected 700 emails, and we've already had one person show up in the Visitor Center who came specifically because of our outreach. Currently, in the Murray Ryan Visitor Center, we have a wonderful partnership with the Silver City Art Association. They did a juryed CDT exhibit, specifically nature-related, so I invite you all to come and see that exhibit. It'll be up for a month. It's very beautiful. We also have a wonderful, hopefully growing partnership with a tour group out of Tucson that came through two weeks ago, a busload of 46. It's the Saddle Brook Retirement Community of about 10,000 north of Tucson. This was the Friends of Their Library fundraiser. They have actually three libraries. And it was fabulous, the way that we had to coordinate 46 people through downtown. It's interesting to work with 46 and find out where our capacities are. They were very gracious, and we have additional tours like that, hopefully with them. We're talking about Clay Festival, and maybe some others, specifically with this tour operator. We also have been talking to a Southern Arizona Jaguar Club, and an Albuquerque Model T group. And with the Model T group, one of the challenges was that they don't drive down here, they truck them down here on trailers, and so we had to first find parking for their trucks and trailers, and then they take the Model Ts off, and they'll be pottering around downtown and into the wilderness, so look forward to that this summer. We are continuing our wonderful partnership with Grant County Tourism. We are together, sharing the expense of wrapping a light rail car on the train system in downtown Tucson, Arizona, that travels right through the heart of their tourist district, the Fourth Avenue, University of Arizona, and downtown. So, we continue to grow that relationship and leverage the dollars of the town and the county. And then I want to also point out, coming up in two weeks, is the Governor's Conference on Tourism, on Hospitality, put on by the newly emerged Tourism Association of New Mexico and the Hot Hotel Association, now called the New Mexico Hospitality Association. I encourage everyone who has a vested interest, which is most all of us in Silver City, to consider joining the Hospitality Association, and/or attending the Governor's Conference or their other event, which will take place during legislative session next year, which is their Trends Conference. They bring in some heavy-hitting presenters nationally, and every time I go to it, I learn something, as well as phenomenal networking around the state nationally. One of the things that we said we were going to do, and that was we were shooting for 20,000 101 postcards to go out in a year. We've already done 10,000, we've ordered 10,000 more, we've received at least 2,000 requests this quarter for the 101s, including, of all things, the Town, Town of Silver City Code Enforcement Office Chief, thank you, requested 100 of the 101s. Esperanza Vineyard, Tucson Book Festival, 650 went out. Lee Gruber handed out 250 when she went to a ceramics conference back east. The Arizona Bike Festival asked for 100, Rose Valley RV, 100, Bear Creek Cabins, D&amp;D Organic Haven, Lake Roberts Motel, Pleasure Way RV. So, we continue to have people requesting it, it's been a phenomenal campaign. The other one we're gonna supplement that with is, jumping over to the press, as you all know, we have the phenomenal 12 pages in New Mexico Magazine, we repackaged it as 16 pages, and in partnership with them, we will be receiving on pallets next week 25,000 of those, that will also be utilized in the same fashion, shared with our community to be used specifically to outreach and bring visitors to Silver City. That's a phenomenal piece that we're really excited about, and I don't know if I reported it here, but we did have a Texas couple come flying in to Grant County Airport, specifically because they saw that article. We also received some wonderful press and photos dot com. We hosted a writer, we hosted a writer from Santa Fe, and we ended up in, of all places, Psychology Today, because they relaxed so much here by taking a meditation class. We hooked them up with Jeff over at the newly opened, thank you, Lotus Center, where they did guided meditation with him at 5:00 o'clock, and the following day at noon, they were doing qigong, and they went home mush, and wrote about how wonderful a sensation that actually was, so that was an interesting one. And then, we also were on Albuquerque TV, thank you to Dave Herndon, the editor of New Mexico Magazine, was on there for an interview, and was flashing around the New Mexico Magazine article, and spoke specifically about Silver City, so that was phenomenal, and we thank Dave for that growing partnership we have with them. The most fantastic thing I have to report, really, is the visitor center numbers this third quarter are phenomenal. You know, I sent them back to Rebecca to make sure that they were right, but in what we've seen in January through March, in January, we saw a 13% increase over the previous year. In February, we saw a 37% increase over the previous February, and in March, we saw a 55% increase in traffic in the Visitor Center. We had the most number of people in March in the Visitor Center that we have had on record, as far as the records that we have access to for the Visitor Center. We had 2,293 people walk into the Visitor Center in March. Because I know Linda will call me up on the statistical methodologies that we're using, I'd like to cut to that chase. If, in fact, it was merely our methodology that was leading to double-digit phenomenal numbers, I would be suspect, but the fact of the matter is, when we compare them to what the, as you know, we've been developing this wonderful report card with different entities, and if it weren't for the fact- third quarter are phenomenal. You know, I sent them back to Rebecca to make sure that they were right. But in this, in the, what we've seen in January, during March, in January, we saw a 13% increase over the previous year. In February, we saw a 37% increase over the previous February. And in March, we saw a 55% increase in traffic in the visitor center. We had the most number of people in March in the visitor center that we have had on record, as far as the records that we have access to for the visitor center. We had 2,293 people walk into the visitor center in March. Because I know Linda will call me up on the statistical methodologies that we're using, I'd like to cut to that chase. If, in fact, it was merely our methodology that was leading to double-digit phenomenal numbers, I would be suspect. But the fact of the matter is, when we compare them to what the, as you know, we've been developing this wonderful report card with different entities. And if it weren't for the fact that the attractions were also reporting double-digit numbers for the quarter, I would be suspect. But the Cliff Dwellings visitor center saw a 20% increase over the previous year. The Cliff Dwelling site itself had a 40% increase of people going to the actual site. The Western New Mexico University Museum, a very happy day to report, 32% increase over the previous year. And the City of Rocks, 33% increase over the previous quarter, over the previous year. So it's not a fluke. They're coming. So just hold on to your hats, because you asked for it, and this might be it. I'm not sure. What we do know is that the weather was good, gas prices are down, and that we're, you know, we're working hard at what we do to promote Silver City. A lot of people are doing that and reaching out. But we are seeing these wonderful numbers. What is interesting is, to this report card for the first time, we have partnered up with lodgers. And we have three lodgers to start out with, to work out the kinks in the system. But the three lodgers that we partnered up with, we asked them to report to us their occupancy for the same period. And occupancy basically allows us to level the playing field. It doesn't disclose any private information for the lodgers, but it allows us to say, you know, how, to what capacity were you full, without talking about rooms, dollars, et cetera. And so the three that we've partnered up with, and I thank them profusely for working with Rebecca on these numbers, is Bear Mountain Lodge, Casitas de Hila, and Murray Hotel to start with. We'll expand this report card, as we have been over the last two years, to continue to add. We already have one downtown business that we're looking at, who's managing statistics. And we want to know that they're doing this in some sort of valid way also. But the lodgers, year over year, while they had good quarters, they were showing, you know, 35%, 63%, and 19% respectively in March, which is respectable. Year over year, we're seeing negative numbers of 2.3% by one of them, 1.3% up by one of them, and down 1.98% by another. At this point, I'm just pleased to report to you that we're expanding these numbers for looking at some of this stuff. As you know, lodgers' tax and gross receipts takes a period of time, and sometimes we can't wait to try and figure out what's going on, because we need to be adjusting our advertising. We need to be looking at what we all do collectively, perhaps, to adjust to the environment as we try to paint a picture of it. Those things tend to follow much later, and we're looking backwards too much. So anyways, this report card is helpful. We're doing it on a monthly basis, so we can see it month by month. But I don't necessarily have the analysis for what that means per lodgers. One of the things that I do know that comes up in conversation with them regularly is the fact that, you know, if you go on, say, an Airbnb, or you look at VRV Auto, Vacation Rental by Owner, there's a significant amount of, you know, single-structure rentals that go on. Those don't show up on any of our lodgers' tax. They don't show up generally on our gross receipts, I don't believe in any way. So, you know, there's a certain amount of changing landscape today, in the way that people are seeking lodging, the way that people are seeking transportation, the way they're communicating. My son is a great example of it. You know, he only takes a taxi. There's now a service, for those of you who are aware of it, where, you know, you go on the internet, you go to the application, and you hitch a ride by somebody who's going your way for $7. So, you know, the world is changing, and we're all going to have to adapt to it. The fact of the matter is, that, I'm not saying that that's contributing to these numbers of the lodgers. I don't know that. But again, there are different ways that people are going about their business today. So we'll continue to report numbers like these and see if we can't figure them out together. A couple other, just last ones that I want to point out. Chocolate Fantasia, on the day of, increased traffic to the visitor center by 29%. So these double digits are, you know, they're just running the gamut everywhere that we look right now. Our visitors are coming statistically from New Mexico, first and foremost, Arizona, Texas, and Colorado, followed by some of these cold states of Minnesota, Wisconsin, Michigan. Some of the snowbirds are en force. The no-shows this quarter, we'll have to work on them, are Delaware, Hawaii, and Mississippi, who sent no one. The big wow, Canada. 52% of our out-of-country visitors were from Canada. 158 Canadians walked into the visitor center this quarter, followed by the United Kingdom at 11.5%, which was 35 visitors. Germany, 29 visitors, at 9.5%. And then it drops down to 3% or below for Netherlands, Australia, Czech Republic, New Zealand, Denmark, France, and on and on, all the way down to one person from Russia. What's your answer? Yeah, it's very good. And they tend to come by three primary things driving them here, word of mouth, family and friends, internet and research, so that does work for us, and publication was number three. And then one of the statistics that the state follows that we are also tracking is return visitors. 7.5% said that they were returning to Silver City. So that's always an important statistic to know, that they don't just come once, but they come twice. And even if they come three times or four times, they're moving here. And of those that responded, which was about 76%, 16% were passing through and not spending any nights. 22.5% were spending one night. 19.5% two nights. 8.1% three nights. And then it drops off to smaller numbers, but more than seven nights was 4.1%. And one of the things that that 101 is designed for, of course, is 101 things to do in Silver City. You might want to stay an extra day, and Rebecca does a great job of enforcing that. And they're coming, of course, for the same things that we know. Primarily, it's outdoors. Hila, Hila Cliff Dwellings, hiking, City of Rocks, National Forest, Wilderness, scenic byways. But steadily in the top three, it's downtown, it's museums, it's galleries. And down at number 11, dining and historic shopping. And so we're getting a good mix, but we know that that great outdoors is our driving asset repeatedly. That is my report. Thank you. Any questions? I'll entertain to do my best. Any questions? Councilor Smith?
George, thank you so much for knowing what I was saying. I have a couple of things to follow up on. So are you studying stuff of visitor centers in other towns and states? Is that kind of a network of visitor centers to send these to?
There is a network. The Hospitality Association, that's one of the prime areas where I'm able to network with those other towns and cities. We are, in the next fiscal year, we're writing into that to expand what that collateral might look like. We're down, we're getting several requests right now, and we are down on collateral to fulfill that right now, but we are looking at what that might look like. As you know, one of the things I didn't mention was, in partnership with the town, we wrote a grant to the Department of Transportation. We were fully funded, supported by all of you, thank you, to develop a recreation map, highlighting historic assets, recreational assets, trails, and so forth. That may become a piece, a really nice piece for us. And so we're looking at that and how that funding, how we can use that funding towards that. It also includes a 24-hour kiosk that we'll place outside the visitor center, so when we're closed, there's still any information available. And it also includes improved signage to trailhead and other assets, underutilized assets in our community.
Great. Couple other questions. So thank you back there, because I know that when I travel, I go to visitor centers, and so that's really good. So as I'm traveling over the next few months, should I take a handful of 101 cards with me?
Absolutely. And it's reprinted in New Mexico.
Yes. And then my last very comment is that I very much appreciate you following up and developing a sampling system of some of the lodging areas, just to keep track of occupancy is useful, and then there's other things coming back. And I want to really encourage you, follow up with like restaurant sales and stuff, because those are the two things that I'm for. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next report, Silver City Main Street, Lucy Whitmarsh.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council, Town staff, and members of the public. I'm Lucy Whitmarsh, and I'm the manager for Silver City Main Street. And this is my quarterly report for January to March of 2015. We also, for Silver City Main Street, we also report to New Mexico Main Street, and they compile the statistics for all of the Main Street communities into one report that they do on an annual basis. So it's very important that we're represented in that. And our statistical information that we reported for Silver City Main Street was that we had three new businesses open, one business closed, one property was purchased, and there were four permits taken out for a total of $154,000 of improvements to the district. And we also logged for Main Street 240 volunteer hours, which by the calculations that were given by New Mexico statistical reporting, has a value of approximately $4,000 in volunteer Another one of our missions is to highlight businesses in our downtown. And one of the things that we did in the previous quarter was that we coordinated an event that highlighted the Power and Light Press, that's a business on College Street in the downtown district. On February 5th, Silver City Main Street hosted a reception at the business, and proprietor Paltrowing was at the opportunity to demonstrate the use of the antique printing presses that she uses to produce posters and cards. She also has retail, so she has production, design, production, and retail in that establishment. And she had designed and printed a poster for the Silco Theater that we used as fundraiser. It was a limited edition poster, and we were able to sell those at the party. And so are at the reception, and so kind of coordinates our mission that we're working on. Also, during the quarter, previous quarter, I represented Silver City Main Street at Grant County Day in January in Santa Fe. And two of our Main Street board members and I attended the New Mexico Main Street Winter Quarterly in Santa Fe. I presented a case study on the Silco Theater renovation project. At the end of March, I represented Silver City Main Street at the National Main Street Conference in Atlanta. They've been wonderful opportunities to both learn about what Main Street can offer for the community and inform others of what is being accomplished in Silver City through the Main Street program, which is a very widely respected program. In March, I was invited to make a presentation to the Silver City Zoning Commission on the Silco Theater renovation project. And I also attended the monthly Historic Review Committee meetings coordinated by the Silver City Community Development Department. And then we also had what I thought was a very, very valuable interchange of information for our community. Myself and two Silver City Main Street board members attended one of the conversations with councilors and colleagues, coordinated by Councilman Ammon Smith, and that was on March 18th. I thought the program was very well-attended, and I learned quite a bit about what we can and cannot do to improve our downtown. We are always fighting a perception that there are too many vacant buildings in the downtown, but statistically, our vacancy rate is about 12%. And having a few buildings available is actually beneficial to economic development, because there are spaces available for businesses to open. A greater concern, and this seems to be from the community, is that we have buildings, and not just in our downtown, but the focus of this particular meeting was our downtown, that are being neglected. But unless the building poses a threat to public safety, there really isn't any way to mandate that the property owners take care of their property. We are hoping to continue the dialogue and find a resolution to this situation. And downtown Silver City is a destination, and Silver City Main Street hopes to facilitate programs that will develop enhanced pride of ownership of the buildings in the downtown to really enhance the experience that people have when they visit our downtown. Do you have any questions?
Councilor?
Actually, I travel to Albuquerque quite often, and I've noticed that in Albuquerque, they have signs that have the logo of the New Mexico Main Street Project, and they identify Albuquerque as a Main Street community. Is it possible for us to get some of those, because they're really colorful and they catch your eye, and I think they would be kind of nice to have?
Yes, we can put in that request. That's a very good idea.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Lucy. Just a basic comment for both the Silver City Main Street project and the Arts and Cultural District. You know, both of these programs have some roots with the State Main Street and the New Mexico Economic Department. And with Silver City, Silver City Partnerships and professional service contracts and other contracts are probably one of our most highly-paid professional service vendors in the economic development arena. And I really appreciate both of you and your organizations and your boards coming and speaking to us, because it is very important that we have an understanding of where our money's going and what it's being used for. Even though it's not always easy to come up here and speak to us and give us a good, the huge body of information that you have in a nice, timely manner, it is very important, and I appreciate your efforts. And I know from what I have seen and experienced, it's, you guys are both doing a wonderful job.
Next report would be the fiscal report. I didn't know if we wanted to do something with another report, with the library first?
Yeah, the library. She has a short.
A short report. That would be a first.
We tell it the words before she...
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilors, staff, public. I'd actually like to start by thanking the council and the mayor for the support of the public library that you voiced at the March 25th council meeting. It really meant a lot to me as director of the public library and to our staff to hear some of your comments. And on a very personal level, just as a citizen of, you know, Grant County and Town of Silver City and our community, it means a lot to me to live in a community where our leadership really understands the value of the public library. In terms of things like quality of life, economic development... life, economic development, and just generally providing an organization and a place that promotes equality in our communities. So thank you very much for that support. What I'm here tonight is to ask and to get the word out and ask for help getting the word out to the community that we are asking for your help to build the future of the library. And what we mean by that is we've just launched a community survey. It went up live on our library blog on June 1st. We also have paper copies available in the community. And we're asking everybody, whether you're a current library user or not, or maybe a future library user, to please get online or to find one of the paper copies of the survey and please fill it out. It will really help us with our long-term planning and really making sure that we're meeting the needs of our community. One of the things that's really changing nationally is the whole concept of bricks and mortar type library. There are so many things that we can do now with online services, a big push for programming, different types of programming, very diverse programming in libraries. Some of this is driven by the impact of technology. Some of it is also driven by changes in how government services are being delivered and how people access government services nationally. And we're also seeing across the board just different expectations from the public and from our library patrons and that they're looking for new types of community spaces. And we really want to make sure that we are addressing the needs of our community in the very best way that we can. I have business cards with our web address and I've put some on the back table. And if anybody wants to pick them up and distribute them, we also have a number of businesses in the community that will have these available. The paper copies of the survey will be available at City Hall, at the Public Library, and also Hidalgo Medical Services. And I'd like to thank some of the organizations that have helped, offered to get the word out about the survey. Guadalupe Montessori School, Aldo Leopold, Alato Gelato, Gila Hykenbike, Hidalgo Medical Services, the Membrus Regional Arts Council. A number of the volunteer fire departments in the area will be assisting as well as the Community Health Council. The last thing is if you enter either online or with a paper, fill out the survey. You also have an option to enter into a prize drawing. And so I'd like to thank the friends of our library who are providing some Amazon gift certificates that we will be giving away. So please help us build the future of the library and get online or pick up a survey and fill it out. Thank you.
Did you have a question, Counselor Connor?
Actually, I have a question about where you're going to be distributing the copies of the survey. Looking at the list that you gave us, there, mostly the people that go to those places are the same people. None of those places, except maybe HMS, are going to reach the Hispanic community. So can you possibly add some places by getting bluac and ball?
We definitely can. And I don't have a full list right now. We're working with the nonprofit resource center and we have a consultant who's working with us. And that's going to be one of the things that she's working on is really trying to get a very diverse input in terms of the survey. So we will be looking at other resources.
I would like to see Hispanic community more involved and also the senior community.
Great. Thanks. Thank you.
Churches.
Yes, name is Churches.
Europe, Mr. Brown.
Okay, so it's budget time. And we've started working on the budget. We've got some preliminary information that we've been working on. And we just wanted to talk about how we've been approaching putting the budget together. But first of all, at the top of the page that I presented to you, I actually wanted to show you some numbers that actually show some actual obstacles that we face when we put the budget together. When you look at the services that we provide, and the general fund is the one that provides most of the services. And so we primarily pay for police, fire, the streets, parks, recreation, pool, library, museum, and executive finance, some of those things. Last year, to make the budget work, I had to redistribute a lot of the administrative costs from the general fund and reallocate them to the water sewer and sanitation. We moved those back this year. And Anita's going to talk about some of those things here in a minute. But what I wanted to show to you was that in the general fund, of the total $9.4 million in budget expenditures, 7.2 million of that is salary benefits. And as an employee of the town, for instance, the police department, their total salaries is about $1.6 million. And for every dollar that we pay a police officer, we also pay 78.9 cents in benefits between retirement and the health benefits. So it almost doubles that cost. You get to the fire department, their budget is about $1 million in salaries, 1.7 total. So we're at 78.2 cents for every dollar they receive in salary. So the benefit is a huge, huge factor when we're working with the budget. Right now, we're in the New Mexico Health Pool, which provides our medical, dental, vision, short-term disability, long-term disability, life insurance. It's a whole package. And we have an option for three, Blue Cross HMO, Blue Cross PPO, and Presbyterian PPO. And they cost different amounts. And actually, what's happened with the police and the fire department, because we negotiated a higher percentage of, paying for a higher percentage of their health insurance, most of them went to the more costly insurances, which has hurt us and made things a little bit harder. But so, one thing that I did want to recommend before, because the policy here now with the Affordable Healthcare Act now is from January to December rather than our fiscal year that we currently work on. So what I wanted to do was go up to RFP for one insurance, a good insurance, but one insurance that costs the same to everybody. Because taking advantage of these things does not put us in a good situation. And as you can see, in health insurance, we pay $1.8 million a year. Retirement, we pay $2.2 million a year. And that we just can't, that one we can't change. That's set by state statute and the retirement plans that are there. So in this next fiscal year, we're going to be, we're budgeting 10 point, almost $10.3 billion in salaries and benefits to come out of the general, the water sewer fund, the sanitation fund, as well as public safety tax. And so it's a significant amount, you know. And this year, we're not adding much, or what we're adding is we're going to plan to fill the positions that are empty because of the increased processing tax, as well as add some additional temporary seasonal employees to the streets and parks department because they've been, pretty severely understaffed these last couple of years because of all the seasonal activities that we have during the year, that we talked about here today. And so that in general is what we've been approaching it from the employment standpoint. But all that, and I'll start talking to you a little bit about the different plans.
Okay, I understand with our briefly on how we came up with the revenues, mostly out of the general fund. We're projecting about $10 million in revenues. And that does include the quarter percent increase in grocery receipts tax. Although we are projecting a 3% decrease in sales, we're projecting a 6% increase in our GRT. And that's primarily due to, well, like I said, an increase in the GRT and property taxes. As far as our transfers, we're going to keep those the same this fiscal year as last fiscal year. We are also going to increase our expenditures by 6%. And that is also as a result of an increase to the employee health insurance. And like Dallas was talking about, to an increase in the personal cost that we're going to redistribute back to the general fund that we had reallocated to water sewer and sanitation. As far as our regular operating costs, we're pretty much going to stay the same as this year.
And so basically, everybody's been directed that they're going to have zero increase in their operating expenditures. The one thing that is going to benefit each of the, well, the larger departments, it's not going to help by lean so much, but those departments, they use a lot of fuel costs because we still budgeted them the same amount of fuel, funding for fuel. Yet now that we got the gas station up and going, we're going to probably see about a 30% decrease in the cost. And we are up and running now. We're just trying to work out the kinks right now on it. And I have invited the solid waste authority and the county to join in so that they can help us pay for operations of our facility. Next is the water sewer fund. We're looking at about $5.4 million in revenues. That's actually a decrease of about 6% in budgeted revenues through this year. What we've seen in the last two years, we've seen about an 11.8% decrease in the amount of water that has been pumped and built. And so, but yet, after the rate changes over the last two years, now that everybody's paying for every thousand gallons, we're in a good place. What it has done, though, is because of the decreased usage per household, last year, the average household used 6.7 thousand gallons during the winter quarterly average. And that's when we set the sewer and wastewater rate based on that average. Well, now it went down to 4.3 thousand gallons per household. So I am going to propose a slight rate increase there to cover the cost of the sewer and wastewater. We're looking at about 20 cents per thousand gallons of sewer and 30 cents per thousand gallons wastewater. And that will add to about an average, based on the 4.7, of about $2 per household increase. As far as the water rates, we're not going to recommend any rate increase. Okay? We did see due to expenses did grow up by about 2%, but because of the reallocation, employee expenditures are going down. And we're going to spend more money in equipment replacement because a lot of our equipment is getting old and we need to start hitting that pretty hard. As well as because, we also are going to see savings and have been seeing savings in electric costs until that rate increase comes. Because we're pumping with water, our biggest expense in the water sewer fund is pumping water. Once we went to the solar ring, that, now we're in a good place there. So rate increases won't impact us very much because I believe we probably only pay about 20% of the electricity to P and M at the wastewater treatment plant. But P and M, we pay 100% of it for pumping water. We plan on keeping staff from there the same, even though we are, we're still working through the process of a regular meter system. I guess they're having some problems because it is the first time they're using a water project for the ESCO. They have to get all those things fixed. If it doesn't, if it doesn't work, based on the study that we've got already, the increased revenue that's going to be generated by catching all the lost water from all the water meters is going to be sufficient to pay debt service. So we could go out to debt service on our own and still do it. So I would recommend that we still do it no matter what. Because it would be very important because we would be able to catch that added water, plus work and be a lot better at customer service with our residents. We could provide tons more information to them. The sanitation fund, the rate in the ordinance, there was an automatic 3% rate increase until this year. I chose not to ask that we do anything with that. But I'm going to ask next fiscal year that we reevaluate the rate every year, just like we do the water, sewer, and wastewater every year so that we, you know, just be adjusted according to the inflationary issues or debt service that we might look at. And basically there, the only really increase in expenditures is we've budgeted to buy another garbage truck. It's going to be the small rear end loader to help with downtown. Because, you know, that little white truck that we drive around downtown, you know, we want to replace it with a burrow and then actually use that white one. What we initially wanted to use it for was for bulky item pickups, so that we can start doing that service. We still do some of it, but not like we could be doing. And maybe probably at the end of the fiscal year, because we're going to have, we're going to be in a good place to be able to replace one of our new side orders. I was thinking that we may look at borrowing money to purchase a side order at the next fiscal year, as well as purchase the recycling carts so that we can go to an automated recycling service. That way, we can expand, you know. What we did find, you know, the easier it is to recycle, the more they're going to recycle, the less our, the more our expenses go down. And provides our residents with a lot more opportunity to decrease their utility bills through changing habits. And that's a big part of why we want to go to the rate unit, as well as speed up that recycling process. Because I've been working, being the chair of solid waste authority, I've been working with this for a while and I really would like to get us to that point because we are the primary beneficiary of recycling here in the town of Silver City. So with that, I really want to know, are we on the right track? Do you want us to look at some additional things or some things in a different way? Or to continue working this direction?
Mayor, I have a couple of questions. I'll let you know my feelings about it. Okay, so first of all, the YESCO meters, are those going to be potentially installed this year is what you're talking about? Because they're not installed yet, correct?
No, they're not installed. What has to happen with an ESCO, which YESCO isn't ESCO yet, it's a company that does ESCOs, is that under this process, they have to have the contract approved by the state engineer on this, energy minerals and natural resources, as well as DFA. So they're working through that process. And so once that's done, then we would sign up, final agreement, and then we would turn around to the floor financing for the project. And then we would get them installed.
What is the expected cost savings to be presented to the council?
Yes, that's the study that we're looking.
That's fair enough.
That's a way for us to say no matter what. So even if we choose to go out and do an RFP to purchase meters and have them installed, we could purchase that study so that we can use it to justify financing ourselves. I mean, and then the fact that we did just, was it last month or two months ago, we renewed our bond rating and it's our bond rating and it stayed at A positive, so we're still in a good situation there.
Then the other question I have is, when you're talking about increasing the recycling, are we talking about, like many places that I've been to, they do the side loading, you know, they, it's in a blue trash can and it's a standard size, but I mean, here we have different sizes and then the regular trash is in a brown one.
We don't really have blue, I think we go to green or something like that.
So, that's what we're talking about, because that will really increase flexibility rather than just multiplying blue bins, which we're not having those.
Yeah, my house, we've, I've got three of those small bins and making multiple trips back and forth rather than one with a rolling cart. We're both carrying down the driveway, which makes it easier.
Yeah, okay, great.
It doesn't have a lid, so if it rains, it doesn't get wet.
Or if it gets windy, it's windy. Yeah, no, I think that that's great because it also cuts down on litter that can occur. And it will also with the side loading part of it because sometimes throwing it into the recycling collector, the guys sometimes, you know, stuff will, you know.
Yeah, they throw it, stuff falls out on the tray and load it. Stuff flies out when you're driving down the street, actually there's multiple opportunities there.
This is another way to decrease litter and things like that. And then, I would just say, I appreciate the information that you provided. I mean, I think it's important even for us to at least show the public to make sure they understand that how much the costs are in salaries and benefits, that that's our primary cost at the town. It sounds like in the general fund that the decrease in the whole harness has been incorporated into the revenues.
Yes, that, but I feel too, because I worked primarily on the graduate side of it and yes, I looked at it, 3% decrease in total sales as well as, so, and then I add, then I added the quarter percent gross receipts tax to get a total amount of GRT revenue and then I took the 110,000 of whole harness this year.
6%, right?
Yeah, 6%.
Of what we, of what we said.
I use last year, this, not this fiscal year, but last fiscal year's total of whole harness and took 6% of that and decreased it up.
So, they're not going to use the 2012 figures, they're going to use the last year?
What they've been doing is, well, I think they used the 2012 number because that's when they were doing the legislation. What happens is, food, actually is one of the few things that actually constantly goes up a little bit rather than the others. So, it changes a little bit every year. So, it's 6% of the total, so it's 6% this year, 12% next year of whatever is reported that year.
Okay, so, and I always thought, I think many of us thought that they were going to stick with the 2012 figures, no matter what, if, even if we were receiving an increase this past fiscal year, if we're going to be slid back to that 2012 figure and that's where the 6% comes off, you know, imagine.
Yeah, I would actually re-reform the legislation and the 2012 number was not in there anywhere. It started, it starts in fiscal 2015 and it'll be a 6% increase from 2015 and then so on. Sixty, I should say.
So, it's potentially a little bit more if we increase, if there's increased sales?
Increases, yeah.
Of food, okay. I mean, six one half dozen of the other, we're still going to, we're still going to lose the money, one way or the other. But I think that the tactic, at least from my viewpoint, I think is appropriate. I mean, it's very balanced and I'm glad that department heads understand that it's going to be flat for supplies and expenses and that sort of budgeting, that there's really no increase there. And it doesn't seem, is there a factor to increase in anywhere in salaries other than the increased cost for insurance?
Yes, all the unions have built-in cost of living increases and I did put in a slight cost of living increase for the executive employees as well to match, to match that what the unions will be getting. Because their executive employees have not had any income.
Right, and so I think that's appropriate. So, the question I have is, there are also increases to personal costs due to redistribution of the administrative services back to the general fund. And I think that, I guess I thought I'd understood that what we had done is redistributed out of the general fund the appropriate costs of those employees in those particular departments so that, you know, sanitation would pay for those employees and their benefits and salaries, which is what you have it.
Doing this data.
Okay.
The, we just redistributed larger percentages of the administration, which means finance, executive, the department has, I added larger percentages to them than really I, that should have been.
Yeah, but at the same time, I mean, while there's administrative services, you're still managing those accounts, so, I mean, when I look at it, it's.
Yeah, they're just separate percentages and they were nothing.
All right. Well, I think that it's nice to see it early, the beginnings of it, and to be able to talk about it with the public. And I think that, you know, this is public knowledge, so I think maybe throwing this up on the, on the website would be a good idea just for people to see.
I think what I wanted to do in the next calendar, have something that you can teleport in a budget form and then we can put that one up there because I think we're very close to being almost complete on these parts, but we need to start working on special revenue and capital.
Right.
Those other projects and see how we might end up having to use a little bit of this money to offset some matching funds that we didn't catch. So, that may take a little bit. Sure, it can take a while. And I did want to add to the general fund, I don't know if you saw it already, that the ending cash balance is now in 1012, to reserve requirements, and that's with the intention of starting to increase our reserve.
Right, and I guess that's what I figured that's what it was. I mean, it's not increasing it too much, but it's enough to begin.
So, we have that, you know, exactly, really, some of the things that I'm hoping is that by going off the charts, you know, that will be something else that I can add into the reserve. And some, I've been trying to be very cautious in the way I project the revenues this year because we have seen a 2% decrease, you know, this next year, we are going to see the big bridge project, so that's going to be some of bulk of gross receipts taxes. We've got our bonus project, we've got our silver street projects, we have a lot of construction projects. Western, I believe, is going to have something going on and so there is going to be a lot of construction, but I don't know how much sales are going to be impacted by access to the town. So, I'd rather have those construction revenues in, in a back pocket just in case retail sales and things like that decrease more than expected. And if they don't, that's added to our reserves.
No, that's, I think that's good because that's one of the things that we talked about for the, for the core of GRT increases because we need these reserves in order to do the things that we should be doing in town or to have the matching funds and to be able to, to really be able to be flexible with the long-term, sometimes, I'm going to use the wrong word, it's not repayment, but getting the money back from the state. Reimbursement is what I meant, yeah. So, I think that it's conservative and I appreciate that because we don't know what the impact will be with the bridge closure, although we'll get GRT from the construction project, it's kind of.
That's the one project that we had to borrow $290,000 because of the water line under that.
That's right.
From them, it's going to generate 340, so really there's only a $50,000, $50,000 wash in that. So, really a lot more coming on the other projects, construction projects, to help us with the reserve or offset any loss.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions?
I'll say them for next time.
Just a quick comment, this is absolutely consistent and in line with the last half dozen years of public meetings, so I think it's a great start. Thank you. Counsel Edison?
Mr. Mayor, I move for a short recess. Mr. Mayor, a second.
We have a motion, a second, for a short recess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion carries, we're in recess. Call this meeting back to order. We're still under reports, is there anybody else who needed a report, any other staff reports?
No.
Okay. Moving on to new business, first item under new business is approval, disapproval of two public celebration permit applications and waiver of NMSA 1978 60-6B-10 of the prohibition of dispensing of alcoholic beverages within 300 feet of a church or school. Event information, Tour of the Hila Bicycle Race Beer and Spirit Garden on May 2nd, 2015, from 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM at 703 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico. License holders are, one, Little Toad Creek Distillery, license number 63004, at HC68 Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061, and number two, Little Toad Creek Brewery, license number 67021, at HC68 Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors, staff, Silver City and public. I am Jack Brennan, I'm the race director for Tour of the Hila, and Michelle Gills and I were the ones applying with Little Toad Creek for this license.
I am Michelle Gills, co-director for the Tour of the Hila. Good evening, everyone, and I'd like to introduce Daryl Evans from Little Toad Creek. He's the assistant manager there. Both Teresa and Sam are busy this evening and could not make it. One is at a craft brewery national level conference up in Oregon and the other is supporting our growing ecotourism and has a group out at her other location in the country, at Country Toad. So, Daryl's here representing Little Toad this evening. Do any of you have any questions for us this evening about the permit or permits?
Any questions? I presume it's going to be very similar to the past.
Yes, same location. Lucky for us, the racers are going to be coming the other way this year, so it'll be even better viewing from the garden there. So, if everything's good.
No, I hadn't seen any concerns or anything from past races, so I think as long as everything is planned the same and everything else, I'm very hopeful that it's a, it's a nice fruitful event. That being said, I'll entertain a motion. Counsel Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve of two public celebration permits, applications and waiver on NMSA 1978 60-6B-10 of the prohibition of dispensing of alcoholic beverages within 300 feet of a church or school. Event information, Tour of the Hila Bicycle Race Beer and Spirit Garden on May 2nd, 2015, from 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM at 703 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico. License holders are, number one, Little Toad Creek Distillery, license number 63004, HC68 Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061, and number two, Little Toad Creek Brewery, license number 67021, HC68 Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061.
Mr. Mayor, a second, the motion is read.
We have a motion, a second, as read into the record. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion, a second, as read into the record. We don't need a roll call for this, do we? All those in favor?
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, and good luck with the event. Next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of a special dispenser permit application for the Silver City Blues and Bikes Fest sponsored by Members Region Arts Council on May 22nd and the 24th from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and May 23rd from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Goth Park and Pope Street, Silver City, New Mexico. License holder, Snappy Mart, number 204, owner name, WNN Enterprises, Inc., at PO Box 559, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff, as you know, the Members Region Arts Council is preparing for our 20th anniversary of the Silver City Blues Festival. This year it's expanded by a day and we've added a number of events, many motorcycle-related events, and so we have expanded serving hours this year for the beer garden for the festival. And I've included all the details in my letter to you. Do you have any questions for me?
Is there any questions?
Yes, sir.
Everybody's, it's same, similar questions, it's going to be the same deal that we've seen and experienced and.
Same location, beer garden will be in. Same location, just going to add Friday, so it'll be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and the same license holder as last year.
Okay, good deal.
I do have a comment.
Counsel Ray Missman.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, say that you estimate maybe a crowd of 10,000 for this one.
Right.
And that's the entire town of Silver City.
I know.
What about the people coming from out of town?
Well, of course, a lot of the people in town may not be there, maybe they're going to leave town, I don't know. The reason, I mean, this is, this is kind of an amazing thing that you may not know, but we get these statistics from the sanitation satellite company, the ones, the company that provides the porta-potties, they have a formula and based on the use, and this is really true, based on the use last year, they know that the crowd last year was over 7,000. So, and we have never had, you know, and now we have three days, so that's an additional day, and we have the renowned Taj Mahal as the headliner who's playing for free, nowhere else in the whole country is he going to be playing for free, so we know that that's going to be bringing people in. And so, we really feel like we have to prepare for 10,000 through the weekend. A lot of them will be there on Saturday, but, so that's the challenge that we face and I know it sounds like an amazing number of people, but that's, it's based on real data.
Thank you so much.
That's some research on the past, I mean.
There is, yeah, thanks.
Very fascinating, yeah. I'm just wondering how they.
Thank you. Don't talk avoid, all right. Thank you, Beth.
If there's no questions, I'm ready. Oh, Counsel Ray.
I think you were right about Taj Mahal, he is going to be playing for free. I was up in Tucson today and I saw for he's going to be playing a couple of these before and he's charging $30 a person, so congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion. Are there any more questions?
No.
No.
Counsel Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve of a special dispenser permit application for the Silver City Blues and Bike Fest sponsored by Members Region Arts Council on May 22nd and 24th from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and May 23rd from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Goth Park and Pope Street, Silver City, New Mexico. License holder, Snappy Mart, number 204, owner name, WNN Enterprises, Inc., PO Box 559. License holder, Snappy Mart, number 204, owner name, WNN Enterprises, Inc., PO Box 559, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061.
Mr. Mayor, our second motion has stated...
We have a motion, a second, as read into the record. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion, a second, as read into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're down to a final presentation, a presentation by the bridge community to request support for their retirement community for senior citizens.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, staff? I'm Skip Thacker, and I am here tonight with fellow Bridge Community Board members, Don Trammell, Kelvin Garland, Linda Brake, Glenn House, and Sherry was here, but she left. Sherry Bassley also is here. The reason we're here tonight is specifically, the bridge community is requesting that the town of Silver City support our development of a continuing care retirement community, otherwise known as CCRC, for senior citizens of Silver City, Grand County, and in fact, a four-county area. Specifically, we're asking for three things. Number one, to agree to be the fiscal agent for Bridge Community for any federal or state financing we might receive in the future. We were advised to do this by Senator Howie Morales. Second, to consider the incorporation of 10 to 15 acres of Silver City-owned land into the project, land that is buildable and will be able to accommodate the footprint of the facility we're encompassing. Third, to assist with the acquisition of any alternative avenues of financing that might be available, since apparently bond issues are a lot questionable for the city and the county. This project, as we anticipate, based on a feasibility study and an analysis of the demographics of our over 65 population in our four-county area, the feasibility study states that we could have up to 70 residents covering all four areas of independent living, assisted living care, skilled nursing care, memory care, and hospice care, along with maybe adult daycare. This project, we visualize, will generate about 37 primary jobs and possibly another 100-plus secondary jobs. So that's what I have to say, if you have any questions, we're here to help answer. Thank you.
Is there any questions, Mr. Thacker? I have some, I'll start off with some basic questions, just to see what we have available and what we could potentially do. One of the things, from a fiscal agent standpoint for grants and such, is this something that would be a burden to our, to our staff, and would we be available to handle those type of services?
We have the, we have the staff available to do it. One thing that we've, we've realized that if they're lucky enough to get federal funding, we don't have that the way like we do with the state. So, yes, we have, we have the capacity to help do that. Other things, avenues that we can go as far as land is that the affordable housing Vista de Plata subdivision, we've applied for the funding to colonias to do the final portion of the infrastructure of the street and sidewalk stuff. There is property there that is available that could suit their needs, and that, based on the housing plan and the, all the requirements of the anti-donation to donate property and infrastructure for affordable housing, this falls within that criteria, so we could, could do something there with that as well. And I think a lot of this would be having to, basically, be willing to put it on our And I just thought that, we did have a discussion, and I've been working with Mr. Trammell for years, talking about this project, but it would be labor-intensive, a lot of time working to identify things and stuff like that, but, you know, it's a very worthy project as far as like economic development. Keeping people in this community of working age isn't so easy when you've got older parents that, we don't have a lot of resources here to help them progress through the different stages of getting older, which this would help us with, you know. Even if we weren't able to put them in the Vista de Plata, I mean, you know, I think the staff, it's, when we have things like this that help economic development, the one thing that, especially me, I understand, is that when people have money to spend in Grand County, that most of it gets spent in Silver City. So, you know, us helping, even if we ended up having it built at Fort Bear was mentioned, or something like that, those people that are employed, that are working, are going to spend their money in Silver City.
We are looking at several alternative locations, and in fact, even in Silver City, if there are any other more level locations than the La Plata district, we'd be interested in that too. But we're seeing, and I agree with you, Alex, that many of our older folks, several of my personal friends that left town, there's nothing here for them, and when they leave, they take their 401Ks.
And we also have other properties, probably even by our senior set, on Pope Street.
Yeah, we've got...
We have other, so we have, we have other things to think about and, and some possibilities.
And we can, and all we would have to do is, in a case like that property, we would have to do the ordinance, identifying that as a location for, for, under the, according to the plan that was done, so then we could donate it, just like we can the Vista de Plata. And so, you know, there are ways for us to do it, it's just identifying the best location, identifying the funding, and let's see what we can get done.
The big problem is the macro financing of this project. Our feasibility study projected for a facility housing upwards of 70 residents could be about $14 million. If we have to cut that in half, maybe so be it, but in any event, the biggest obstacle is the macro financing. This is why we're asking the town's help for alternative sources.
And especially the affordable housing, I don't know that if your feasibility study took into account that you could, a big cut, part of the cost of the construction is the infrastructure and the property, and in the case of the Vista de Plata or the La Capilla or other site that we may own, that we may be able to work with them on, is we've cut that number down considerably, so that more of the dollars that we can get go directly into construction.
Councilor Thack?
Thank you very much.
Can I speak, yeah, I just want to talk about it just briefly. I have a question, in terms of the Vista de Plata, is that, if it's incorporated there, does that change in any way the plan that we have for the rest of the affordable housing in that area? Because we have a really nice plan, and it's a beautiful lot, I mean...
It would have to be redone somewhat, but remember, there's 53 lots there, and the section that we initially looked at doesn't affect that very much, no.
Okay, that, I mean, you know, because having that option for all the folks that come into town to work, I think this is an incredible and worthy project. I'd like to think about maybe some other properties, just because I want to make sure that we have affordable housing for folks, you know.
And that's why I think La Capilla was, is just one of the options, other alternatives. You know, we do have those 160 acres that we have outside of town that we have no access to, you know, that we could sell and purchase a property that actually could work for it.
One of the main areas we need is a fairly level plot of land, at least to cover the footprint of a main building of maybe a couple or three or four acres, and that's one of the problems we foresee with the La Plata area, it's kind of down in a valley.
And the first part that we sort of looked at is, is down by Kelly, is down at the bottom there, where it would, connects to Kelly at that portion, so that would be the more flat area. And so you would have all the lots that have houses up on the top.
Because, I mean, I'll be honest, I mean, I foresee myself living in a facility like that, and I don't want to miss Silver City. You know, I, you know, my family lives in California, so, you know, looking down the road, it would be something to think about for me personally, and that's why I've always been interested in the project. I think that one of the things about, once it's designated as part of affordable housing, the infrastructure, all the work that the town had put in at Vista de Plata, I mean, we leveled areas in Puente Phil, so I wouldn't, if it's something where the town and the county is designating something that's for affordable housing, that infrastructure, like Mr. Brown said, is already factored into it, because that's quite an expense, and it's something that the town would be doing as part of the project, right?
Yeah, right now, I think with the Vista de Plata, the two infrastructure costs, we did just put in an application for colonias for the, to finish it, but to this point, I believe we spent a little over $2.8 million, and we've just requested another a little over a million dollars to finish it.
And it also increases accessibility to all of our citizens. That's, that's a concern of mine if we do something like this, and having it be part of that affordable plan would increase accessibility to everyone that lives in town to be able to, to live in that community.
To afford the home, the number one.
Yeah, especially with the, with the bridge community with moving down, because health, health costs are only going to get more expensive as we grow.
Up on the top of the Odom's deal, we just started to...
Sounds good. Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Is there any other questions or comments? I believe from, you know, on so many levels, I oftentimes lean towards economic considerations, and economically, it just makes, makes a lot of sense. Even our young, working families oftentimes aren't able to continue living here, they end up having to move with their parents so that they can take care of their parents at whatever facilities or communities can handle them, so it is a, it is just one of the other elements of a, of an area with a high quality of life and standard of living that we strive to be, and especially being an inclusive community like we are. I think this is something worthwhile, worthwhile, some, a little bit of staff time and effort. I think, based on what Mr. Brown said, I think we could handle, and we have the capacity to, to handle being a fiscal agent if need be. I think we do have some opportunities with land, so I don't think that that would be a huge burden to, to be able to find something and get skin in the game in that, in that respect. And we probably do have a few resources and abilities to assist in finding other future potential resources, so, so I would, I would like to guide staff into continuing their work and, in the work that they've done and continued in some future work in assisting this group. Any other comments? Is there any other guidance that you wish to have?
At this, at this point, more than we are involved in identifying, now, we'll need to sit down with them and look at their feasibility study and all of those things, so we can really start looking at what the possibilities are, especially here in town, and then, you know, after we start identifying things, we'll start coming back to you and letting you know what we're looking at, what funding sources we might need to apply for, because we would be the one applying in their name. And then, it's, it would be end up something sort of like HMS, where we got the, we got the funding, and then we were able to, after a time, turn our ownership to HMS, and, which we just recently did, just so you know. But, you know, there's ways of getting it done, because ultimately, it would be a nonprofit that would operate it and stuff like that, so, and maybe you've got, you've looked at business plans as well. So they've, they've done a lot of work. It's just a matter of us sitting down now with them and getting a lot more, a lot better understanding. But I think probably the first thing that you, you as a council will see, is that we're going to add it to the ICIPs, so that way we can look for the funding, start requesting the funding.
Even if, even if this was to end up on a property outside of our community, I think, I think it's still our assistance as even fiscal agent and such, it's still to add value, and it is a...
The ICIP doesn't have to be in Silver City, I mean, the regional water, the wells, the regional water, that actually, I don't know if it is yet, if it's not, it should be. So, yes, we can put those, those projects on the ICIPs.
Thank you. Only one more item on the agenda. Councilor Thack?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn. Mr. Mayor, I surrender.
We have a motion, a second, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.